All right, thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the November 7th, 2011 City Council Meeting. If everybody could do me a favor, take their cellphone out, take a look at it, turn it on silent, so that we don't have any phones going off during the meeting, that would be much appreciated. And it's, uh, we do have a executive session this evening that we will have to go into for settlement of claims, pending litigation, real estate negotiations, and usually when we go into executive session, we come back out and the meeting is over. Tonight, we will have an agenda item that we have to address following the executive session. There will be one item to vote on. That is the, um, the sale of real estate by the city of Waukegan to Habitat for Humanity. So, um, if we could have a roll call, please. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moisio.
President.
Alderman Bedling.
President.
Alderman Newsome.
President.
Alderman Tempest.
President.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Valco.
President.
Alderman Rivera.
President.
We have a quorum. Thank you, and I would like to, um, give a shout-out to Alderman Tempest. He's recovering from some, uh, little bit of knee surgery, and, um, so I guess he wasn't able to make it this evening, but we hope he's feeling better, and that he's making a quick recovery, and everything is, is working well in that regards. So we could please rise for a moment of silence, silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight, because of the fact we've got a fairly short agenda, and I have the mayor to play this evening, I've got to forego all my usual mayor's comments, but I am going to make some quick, real quick announcements of some events that are occurring. Uh, on Wednesday, November 9th, the Greentown Tavern, we have a Members Plus networking event that is being held. I believe this is coming from Waukegan Main Street. They have, um, a guest speaker from PAD, and, uh, should be interesting. Five dollars for members, eight dollars for non-members. Veterans Day event is this Friday, and it is 11:11:11, so it's an interesting kind of a date. The parade starts at 10:30 down at Grand and Genesee, followed by about 11 o'clock, I'm sorry, about 11:15 at Weston Washington, at the Memorial location is where we will have the ceremony, and it's always a nice event, and hopefully we'll have some nice weather, and everybody will be able to turn out. Yes?
Turn your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry. That didn't make it in. I'm going to start over again. I apologize for that. I hit my mic button. Um, again, Members Plus event, Wednesday, November 9th, 6:00 PM, Greentown Tavern, being hosted by Main Street, featuring Tanya Brady, speaking about the Waukegan PAD AED initiative, saving lives one shock at a time. Five dollars for Main Street members, eight dollars for non-members. Uh, Friday 11th, November 11th, we have our Veterans Day Parade, starting at 10:30 at Grand and Genesee. The ceremony is about 11:15 at Weston Washington, and I'd encourage everybody to come. It's, uh, it's usually a very nice event, it's, it's worth coming. Uh, November 11th, at 8:00, we have Colin Mokri and Brad Sherwood performing at the Genesee Theater, started, as I said, at 8:00. We also have a film, um, kind of a preview premiere, The Interrupters. It's a locally-produced film, I believe, and there is a post-film discussion with the filmmakers and special guests, that's Saturday, November 12th, at 6:30 at the Genesee Theater. Tuesday, November 15th, from 6:00 to 7:30, um, the Waukegan Public Library Writers Revealed Program is hosting Maria Duenas, and she's the author of the international bestseller, El Tiempo Anso de Costuras, is celebrating the English-language release of her book. Then Art Walk is, um, scheduled for November 19th, from 5:00 to 10:00. If you haven't been to one, you gotta come. They're, they're amazing events, they're a lot of fun, a lot of great art, we have a lot of new people coming into Waukegan, a lot of music, um, there's a free shuttle service between north and south Genesee Streets, so that people can make their way between where the events are being hosted a little bit easier, but I really would encourage you, if you haven't been to one, come, catch the new culture wave that were, is rising in Waukegan, and, uh, you know, this is all part of what I talked about when I first came into office, about the rebirth, the rebranding of the city of Waukegan, and it's working. And we are bringing in a lot of new partners, we have a lot of people that are engaged in the arts in Waukegan, so come on and be part of it. Dinner with the Bulldogs, Boys Basketball Fundraiser, Friday, November 18th, from 7:30 to 9:00. Ten dollars per adult, five dollars per children under 13, or 25 for a family of four. At the Washington Campus Cafeteria, you'd be able to meet the players and coaches, chat about the season, past seasons, and upcoming events. Waukegan Concert Chorus presents Music of America, Sunday, November 20th, 2011, at 4:00 PM. The location is, I'm looking for it, and I don't see it. David, where's this at? Does anybody know?
Let me see if I can see.
I'm sorry, First Presbyterian Church, yes, I found it, yeah. First Presbyterian Church of Waukegan, 122 North Martin Luther King, and, um, it sounds like that should be fun. Uh, Attention Waukegan Alumni Family and Friends, raffle tickets being sold for the fundraiser at Jester's, and there's live entertainment, Terry James and the Blue Flames. Uh, first prize is a 42-inch flatscreen TV, second place prize is Brian Urlacher Autograph Football, third place prize is $50. Winner not, need not be present to win. This is for the Class of 1982 30th Reunion, silent auction, et cetera. Salsa Night, every Thursday at Rhythm Academy of Dance, 200 North County Street, downtown Waukegan, 6:00 PM beginner classes, 7:00 PM advanced classes, $10 per class. That's located right across the street from the library, it's very easy to find. So, we have a lot going on. Um, I will go to, let me ask you, Chris, are we doing your thing this evening?
We have, you know, we have, um, E-Gas.
Yes.
And so, we put it off until next, so it'll be the next.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. We'll go right on to, um, audience time then. Uh, first up would be Violet Ricker. Violet, I have probably stolen most of your thunder here, but as usual, you're always welcome to come up and, and, you know, speak ad hoc.
Oh, thank you, I've got plenty more to talk about. Don't worry. Good evening, my name is Violet Ricker, I live at 203 West Water Street, and I'm also the Director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit organization. Um, I'm very excited tonight to give a quick outcomes report on some of the things Main Street has been working on that we've accomplished over the past month. Uh, first and foremost, I cannot possibly thank the volunteers enough who came to help with Paint the Town. We had over 600 volunteers come, we repainted 29 buildings, and did two murals, and relit the historic restaurant sign on the Carter Hotel, uh, I'm sorry, on the Fong's Kitchen, and pretty soon, we'll be hearing a resolution thanking the people who participated in that. It's really made a tremendous difference, we got a lot of great press, and had a lot of people come into Waukegan that day who hadn't been there before, to help us out with that exciting project. Um, there are a few dates that I'd like you to save, and Mayor, thank you for reminding us of all those coming up. The one in particular, um, is the Members Plus Gathering, which is Wednesday, that's at Greentown, that's a chance to hear an update on everything we're doing in downtown Waukegan. November 19th is the Art Walk, that's going to be really, really fun, and December 3rd is our Holiday Walk, which you'll be hearing more about tonight from some of our wonderful volunteers. I do want to just make sure that everyone has seen two really exciting things, construction going on in downtown Waukegan. First is that the Carter Artspace Project has officially started construction. We are so thankful to everybody who contributed, both their finances and their time, to help us get that project going, and we'll be celebrating that much more on December 3rd with some special guests in town to help us with a ceremony that day at 4:00 during our Holiday Walk. And you'll also have seen that the new sun building is officially, uh, coming down on Sheridan Road, that's making way for some of the College of Lake County expansion plans, and I'd encourage anybody who hasn't reviewed that plan yet, to visit the website, clcillinois.edu/masterplan. There's a lot more information about what they're doing, and there's a brief survey that anybody can take to kind of help influence what program we'd like to see downtown, and obviously, we at Main Street are lobbying for a lot more arts programming to be done there. One project that I do want to mention that we're working on, um, is that we are putting in informational kiosk signs in downtown Waukegan. Most of you have seen this already, uh, but this is a kiosk that will feature where our downtown businesses are located, and will also allow for some advertising space, and we're giving first choice on that to our downtown business owners, but you'll all be hearing from me more about that if you know any businesses in the rest of Waukegan who might be interested in, uh, advertising to the audience that we've got coming to downtown frequently, we'd love to work with them. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Violet. Uh, Chuck Lack, 5531 Hilltop Lane.
Hi, my name is Chuck Lakey, 5531 Hilltop Lane at Daybreak Farms. I'm going to keep mine brief tonight. I'm, um, concerned again about communications on meetings and how they're published to the general public. I would request that somebody update the website for the Waukegan Council. We've had, uh, new board members elected, and their pictures aren't even on there yet, and I think some of the agendas for some of the committees go back to April of 2010. So, if somebody could just take an extra five minutes and try to get that updated, that's the only communication some of us who live 20 to 25 minutes away from here have on what's going on within the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. I'm sorry, I butcher your name every time, I forget the, the Lakey. I do apologize, yeah. Uh, next up, Mr. Joe Schmidt.
Joe Schmidt, 446 North Sheridan Road, President, Founder of Fist Incorporated. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, and the audience. I'm here tonight to talk about Waukegan Beachfront, and the experiment that we joined in with the city this year of Fist running the beach house at the end of the summer, through mid-July to the end of the year. Financially, it wasn't a great success for Fist, but I think it was a great success in that we've learned a lot of things that we can do, we've implemented, or we're planning a lot of things to do with the beach run next year, with the city's council permission and approval. We want to put boat rentals down there, some kayaks, some canoes. We want to do sandcastle building, we want to do kite flying. We want to make the beach a destination, an active destination, rather than a passive place for people to go. And Fist is encouraged, and we're enthusiastic about putting this together, uh, we want to, we're investigating with our insurance company, the possibility of putting together a volunteer trolley, that we can run through the downtown area, through the, through the harbor, the lakefront, up around Greenwood Avenue, and back around again, so we can tie the entire downtown district together, and we can marry the downtown loop with the lakefront, which I think is something that's been lacking here in Waukegan for a long, long time. And we hope to work closely with the city, and try to put something together for next year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, Mr. Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. Uh, wanted to address my concerns here tonight regarding some issues that was displayed, and comments that was displayed regarding the community garden. Uh, there were some things that were said as far as that particular spot being ugly, messy, messy, and not producing any jobs. That's not true. What I want to say regarding the community jobs, regarding the community garden, my organization, we purchased five lots in that community garden. We purchased lawn mowers, we purchased weed eaters, we put 15 to 20 young people to work out of our community this summer, with no state, federal, or local funding, just with the sweat equity of a few faithful members, funds, and some help from the community. We solicited, we went around and we asked people to, along with the help I might mention, uh, pre our automatic candidate, Ms. Evie Harkin, she came to us with a proposal of a like-minded interest in what we was doing as an organization, with a Youth at Work Initiative. And with that Youth at Work Initiative, and our organization, we partnered, we went around the community, and we asked people to allow us to cut their lawns, and I want to take time to extend a public thanks to those who allowed us and supported us by allowing us, our youth, to cut the lawns. So between cutting lawns, and between that particular garden, we paid young people to cut gardens, I mean, to, to, uh, cut yards, and to plant in that garden, and to till the soil. We didn't really care if it really harvest anything, but the fact that we was able to allow them to put some monies in their pockets. We didn't ask the city for anything, but what I don't appreciate is our children had to look on the camera and ask me, "Brother Blanks, why are they calling our garden ugly?" Now, it's easy, if anybody know anything about gardening, or, excuse me, know anything about life, it's easy that, if you know anything about life, it's fall, and in the fall season, every garden in anywhere looks ugly. It looks messy, I mean, that's just the nature of things. And believe me, that as we approach the fall, or the winter seasons of our life, we don't look as pretty as we do when we are in our spring and in the summer seasons of life, that's just the nature of things. So it's very easy to come in the month of October, excuse me for raising my voice, I remember you all wrote this ordinance against me called the "Ordnance of Civility and Decor", but the actual fact that everybody can sit on this side of the bench and raise their voice to the top of this, of this chamber, then everybody shouldn't have to come up here to the mic and speak and eat humble and pass it by, but I'm going to, excuse me, I'm going to put my composure back down and bring it back into order. But I'm, I'm very passionate when we are not coming to ask this city for anything, and we put young people to work out in the garden, and what they did was a beautiful thing. You know, if you have vision, if you have insight, it's easy to ride by the garden on the side of the road and say it looked ugly, if you're waiting on it to fail. But if you really want to support your community, and what I want to say is, if you took time to walk through the garden this summer, to see the cherry tomatoes, and when it was at the height of its beauty, to see the cherry tomatoes, to see the cantaloupe, to see the peppers, to see the, the cabbages that was planted, to see Motherhood, and all of our youth working over there together to produce a crop, and I'm going to tell you right now, don't anybody touch a single thing over there and move, remove nothing, to everybody that have invested their time and effort, have harvested their crops from that garden, I'm just saying that. And so what I'm saying is, in spite of what you see from the surface of things, if you have vision and insight, the beauty of it was, we worked together. We put money in our youth pockets. We harvested them crops, and after we planted them, we sat in our meetings, and we ate cherry tomatoes, and we enjoyed it. So it wasn't a total loss, it wasn't ugly, because if you got vision and insight, you can see beauty beneath the ugliness of things. Now, if you want to talk about something ugly, uh, there, you know, and that's not to pick on it, and I know there are those who would say, "Well, that's the, that's the, uh, what you call the park district." Just like, four blocks west of the garden, you have the Roosevelt Park. Now, I understand the beauty, overall beauty of what they're trying to do there, it's a conservation wetland, but if you look right down to the side of the road, right there at Belvedere and McAllister, you see a bunch of weeds, if you don't have vision and say that's ugly, and it's there every year. Nobody said nothing about that, but it's a conservation wetland, so I see the overall beauty of what I'm, what they're trying to do there. So all I'm saying is, our youth shouldn't have had to look on TV and have to see somebody cutting down the efforts that they put into coming together. So I know my time is almost up, but I want to say, I would like to see us have a first ward meeting that we haven't had this year, so we can discuss some issues. And, and Alderman, I extended my card to you, and you said you was willing to work with us, please come out. We still extend that invitation, but I do not like when people use this camera for their, in their symbolic premier or your campaign speeches, but when it comes down to the substance of doing what needs to be done in our community, something as basic, something as basic as a ward meeting have not been done, I do not like people making our children feel very discouraged. It was a beautiful thing with the garden, thank you for your time and your attention, and, uh, don't touch that garden until we got our crops, that's all I want to say.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Blanks. Um, Chris Dobbs, please.
What kind of package deal?
Oh, who, okay.
Good evening, everyone, Christopher Dobbs, 2016 North Popular Street, I am the President and CEO of Lost Horizon Media Group. Uh, this is Amy Ortiz, who is also with me. Um, we're here to discuss a couple of upcoming events that you all may not know about, the first of which is Upscale Friday. Upscale Friday is the brainchild to pretty much bring back shopping in downtown Waukegan. We're trying to market it as the sane alternative to Black Friday. So we will have, at the Rhythm Academy of Dance, we're having all sorts of vendors, from clothing to jewelry, anything that you would possibly want to go out and buy at a mall, you can come out to your own backyard, shop local, shop Waukegan, spend money, and invest in your own people. And then we are also having performances at the Beautiful Clockwise Theater from 2:00 to 8:00 PM, and then we will also be featuring restaurants, Fong's Kitchen, Jerry's Tacos, and the brand-new Fea Amico. So along with that, we are going to help segue that into Holiday Walk, which will be December 3rd, and Amy will tell you more about that.
Good evening. So, most of you are probably familiar with the Waukegan Main Street Holiday Festival that happens every year. This year, we've decided to rebrand it a little bit, we're calling it Holiday Walk. We want this to become a holiday destination for tourists, residents, visitors, you name it, we want them here. And what we're aiming to do is provide a unique experience that can't be found in other places. We really want to leverage Waukegan's unique identity, and encourage people who haven't been back to Waukegan to come back now. So, part of the strategy with Holiday Walk is really moving beyond just the 2:00 to 5:00 PM one-off event. We're now working with other organizations and merchants downtown to really expand that into a larger, day-long experience for people, and this really includes the Puerto Rican Society's Toys for Tots campaign, it includes the Waukegan High School Bulldog Alumni Holiday Shindigity, their language, not mine. Um, that's going to be happening downtown Waukegan on the 3rd. We're also really kind of throwing out the gauntlet to all businesses throughout the city of Waukegan, not just downtown. Decorate your storefronts for the holidays. Get after it. You don't have to wait for someone to say, "Hey, what do you think about decorating your storefront? Just do it." We're talking about November 25th throughout the rest of the holiday season, this is the opportunity that I think we can provide for people to come back downtown, experience some great things, from pub crawls and caroling, to cookie decorating, to all kinds of holiday activities. Um, we've got a lot, lot bigger event planned for this year, and we're really working hard with other members of the community to pull this together. So, we're going to have WAGS fundraiser, that's going to be involved, the Genesee Theater, of course, has their annual, um, Santa Pictures, which are free for kids, as well as storytelling, and, and all of these things are going to coalesce into a very nice, day-long experience for tourists, the city of Waukegan. So, I really hope that everybody comes out and, and spends some time downtown, most of the activities are free. Um, we've got almost every restaurant or venue in the city on that day providing either a nightclub experience, such as Big Ed's, Terry James and the Blue Flames, we've got all kinds of things happening, this is going to be a very, very positive experience, and there's a lot to do for every age group and every demographic, so I really hope that everyone comes down to take advantage of it. The other piece of this, which you may or may not know about, we are putting out a call, by "we" I mean shop Waukegan, this is a Facebook page, if you are a merchant anywhere in the city of Waukegan, and you would like to be featured in our Holiday E-Guide, send between one and three product photos and descriptions, we'll put it in the book, it'll be available for download, and we'll have this ready to go by the day after Thanksgiving, so that people really begin to understand what's available downtown, what's unique about it, and why they should shop local. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks for everything you're doing too, we appreciate it. It's great to see a lot of people really getting involved and helping rev things up. Well, um, next we have the, that concludes audience time, please. And next we have the minutes, I'll take a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Moisio, to approve the minutes of October 17th, 2011, for both the regular meeting and executive session. All in favor?
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor.
Yes.
Over here, the Eighth Ward, sir. If I may, there was a slight error, and I, if they haven't caught it, I just want to make sure it's caught, under roll call in the minutes, I'm absent, but I was here.
Bill, that was corrected.
It was corrected?
It was corrected, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, we're all set then? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Um, next we have, um, you know, we've talked a lot about the things that have been going on in Waukegan today, uh, and, you know, you think back to over the last few weeks, there's been some really amazing, uh, things accomplished in our downtown. Our downtown, right now, looks nothing like it did just six weeks ago. It really is sparkling, it really is shining, it really is saying, this is a place where you want to come, this is a place where you want to see what's going on, where you want to be part of it, and all those people that came and worked, the 600-plus volunteers that showed up, many of them were not from Waukegan, but they came in here, had the time of their lives, helping to paint the downtown, helping to make it look better, but many of them were from Waukegan as well, and our thanks go out to everybody. And I asked David to work with us on getting a resolution and proclamation this evening to acknowledge all of the hard work that went on, and, um, the first resolution that we have, and the clerk will read, is to thank Delilah and the Paint the Town Project in general for just getting this started and bringing it to Waukegan. Mr. Clerk.
This is a resolution, Delilah's Paint the Town 2011. Whereas the city of Waukegan has, was selected to be the recipient of this year's Paint the Town Project, thanks to radio personality, Delilah, and her many sponsors, and whereas Delilah's Paint the Town took place on October 15th, 2011, in downtown Waukegan, and whereas Delilah's Paint the Town was able to bring more than 600 volunteers to our community to help spruce up the storefronts in our downtown, and whereas Delilah's Paint the Town, these generous volunteers loaned their time and their talent for this effort, and painted more than 40 addresses on Genesee Street. And whereas Delilah's Paint the Town faithfully restored restaurant sign on the building on Genesee Street and Madison Street to again serve as a landmark in downtown Waukegan. And whereas Delilah's Paint the Town also left us two very colorful and inspirational murals that will help to further, uh, further designate Waukegan as a destination. And whereas Delilah's Paint the Town left a very creative and lasting mark on our community, and now therefore be resolved that an embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Delilah in gratitude for her lasting impact on our community, dated the 7th day of November, 2011.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all this, and that. Then, um, Item B, which is a second resolution, it's playing off of the first one, and, uh, we're thanking the artists that helped paint the two new murals in our downtown, some really amazing amount of hours were put into this work. I mean, I was coming down here at night, seeing people working at 11:00, you know, even later than that, when I was in bed, people were still working, you know, through the end of the morning, and between, you know, the energy that Dave Motley brought to this, and the entire crew that helped to make this all possible, we would like to acknowledge everything that you've done with this next resolution.
David?
Could I get all the real artists to come up here, please? That includes Alderman May. She spent some time on the scaffolding. Please? Violet, you painted, Mary Claire, Joe and Joe from Fist, stand right there. So first and foremost, no one spent as much time on the scaffolding ladder, or behind the paintbrush, more than my good friend, and I guess my blood brother, Patrick Tufo. He's awesome, and by the way, he's afraid of heights, but it didn't matter. Join. So, Father Clerk, would you read the resolution, please?
It's a resolution, Waukegan Arts District Murals. Whereas the city of Waukegan is a benefactor of two colorful and creative murals that help to further designate our community as an art destination, and whereas Waukegan Arts District Murals brought out some of our most talented and imaginative minds to work together to bring these concepts to life, and whereas Waukegan Arts District Murals serve as an artistic history lesson about Waukegan's past, present, and future, and whereas Waukegan Arts District Murals now serve as beacons to our downtown, and have generated a great amount of traffic by onlookers and supporters, and whereas Waukegan Art District Murals are not only a source of renewed pride in our community, but are also a testament to the lasting legacy that the arts have made on our community, and now therefore be resolved that limited editions of digital reproduced copies of these murals be presented to the Waukegan City Council, and to those in attendance at the audience tonight, uh, and their, for their unwavering support of the Waukegan Arts Revolution, and further be resolved that an embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the and city clerk, be presented to the Waukegan artists who helped bring these locations to life with their efforts and for making their creative mark on Waukegan's downtown, dated the 7th day of November, 2011.
Thank you for everything you've done.
We tried our best to wrangle all these artists, free creative spirits, and that's awfully difficult. But, we are trying our best to have a dedication event that'll take place in the next couple of weeks. We do have a benefactor that will give us some hospitality. Second of all, as you may know, the South mural does not have a name yet. So we're about to unveil a contest, Name the Mural Contest. People can submit their applications and their names to probably the mayor's office in the next couple of days. We'll talk to you more about it, Dan, in a second. So if you have a name, you probably notice on the poster that you're getting right now that the South mural has the Genesee Theater marquee. The name that is selected for the South Genesee, I mean, the North Genesee Marquee mural will be made and forever written on that mural right there. So, hopefully you guys got some good head start. In the next couple of days, you'll hear more about the project. So, thank you so much, you guys. You guys are awesome. And my fedora comes off, just for you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. And I just want to, I'm going to reiterate, this is just the start. I can guarantee you that things are going to get bigger, things are going to get better, and things are going to get more exciting. We're entering into more partnerships. We've been in discussion with a lot of prominent local universities and art museums about becoming part of this arts evolution in the city of Waukegan. And, you're going to see things starting to grow, and it's going to be fun. I can promise you that. We're all going to have a lot of fun getting through this rebirth of cultural Waukegan. So, thank you, everybody. That concludes our resolutions and proclamations. Next, we go to, well, if I might, we do have the opportunity this evening to use the omnibus to be able to get through this, the business before us very quickly. There's, as I said before, I know there's a Bears game tonight. We do have, it's going to be a little bit of a longer executive session tonight. We have about six topics before us, but we'll go through as quickly as we can. But we can, we cannot do Items G under New Business and Recommended Actions by Corporation Council, as well as under, bear with me a second, which is Item F, I'm sorry, which is right before that, which is Voting on the Estimate for the City of Waukegan's Aggregate Tax Levy. And again, this is just strictly an estimate. Gives us some working numbers to kind of build things around. So if we would take, I would entertain a motion to go into the omnibus agenda. We have the motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please. Without F and G, without Items F and G, as stated. Yes. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
No.
That's it? We're done?
That's it.
Okay.
If there's one additional item or something.
Thomas, is there something you wanted to hold over specifically?
No, I just feel like I agree with Alderman Teppis when he said he didn't believe in it, and I agree with him, I don't believe in it also.
Okay.
I believe they should be publicly available to people.
That's fine. We're never, we never try to hide anything, we just try to move things along quickly, and everything is always out there for public information. But, so we go to Committee Reports and Motions. Public Safety Committee Report, Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. I have two items on the agenda and two that we have for discussion. The first item was to approve the removal of a handicap parking space in front of 842 Lennox, because that person has moved out of the house. So, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to remove the handicap parking space in front of 842 Lennox and rescind the city ordinance for the location.
We have the motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B is for the purchase of a Chevy Tahoe for our Tahoe interceptor for our evidence technician. And in that regard, the Public Safety Committee recommends and ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase a 2012 Chevy Tahoe four-by-four police interceptor under the State of Illinois contract number PSD 4016025 for the total price of $30,650.10 from Miles Chevrolet, 150 West Pershing Road, Decatur, Illinois, 62526.
Yeah, we have the motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
And the only other things, the Waukegan Police Department received a forfeiture check in the amount of $9,922.88 from the Illinois State Police, and proceeds at auction held on October 1st, 2011 were $2,703.04. These checks have been deposited to the general fund, and I am complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conkin. Next, Judiciary Committee, Alderman May.
Yes. We have two items tonight. The first item is the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the limited area groundwater ordinance as presented by Corporation Council prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply in designated area near, at the southwest corner of Sunset and Lewis Avenue in ISO move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded, who, did someone say second? We have the second by, I'm not sure who said that.
Cunningham.
Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Second item we have is an ordinance amending the vacant structure registry ordinance. And the main change in this ordinance for my Alderman, my fellow Alderman, is the period for registration used to sit at 18 months, we're expanding that to 48 months due to the environment of the real estate industry and the economy. We're giving the properties the ability to register for a full 48 months. So, the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to approve the ordinance amending the vacant structure registry ordinance as presented by Corporation Council.
Just one moment, please. Okay, all right, thank you. We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more item that was discussed at Judiciary Committee, I just wanted to make a comment. We had, we had received a request from the village of Wadsworth to talk about Beach Road up by the sports park. The Judiciary Committee has referred this item to the Public Safety Committee to be considered for a parking ordinance. And that's all I have today.
Great. Thank you very much. Next is Economic Development Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item on the Economic Development Committee, and that is the approval of the SMG for management of the Genesee Theater. The contract basically is the same, with the exception of three main points. The management fee, which is a $50,000 management fee for, from May until September. We're in the middle of that now. It averages out to about $3,500 per month. The next item is, we amended a 30-day opt-out to a 60-day opt-out for both the city and the, and SMG. We felt that this was a good thing for both. We also, the next point, the cap, we put a cap on a traveling and entertainment, corporate entertainment expenses to 4,000. SMG has never gone over 4,000 on this. So those are the three main issues that we were able to agree on. And I'd like to give a lot of credit to Anna Finn for the hard work that she's put in for the past, for quite some time. And also, I'd like to thank our staff as well, and, and the committee as well, so. So ISO move on the approval of the contract for SMG for management of the Genesee Theater.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. May I ask, were there terms in the contract requiring a certain number of shows to be booked during the remaining life of the contract?
We have that in the contract, as far as numbers are. We are going to be meeting with Mr. Sabinski sometime after the holidays to discuss the, the amount of shows and put a number on it.
Okay.
And that will be done. We just wanted to make sure that we took care of the agreement first before we come to agreeing on the amount of shows.
So it was made clear that even though we are approving this contract, that they should expect it to be amended?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, no, no, I mean, we don't have, we don't have any numbers as far as events are concerned on the contract. We're going to discuss those, because we want to make it clear that, for example, a wedding is not an event.
Right.
It's not, it's an event, but it's not a show.
Yes.
So we're going to define that when we meet after the holidays.
Okay. Well, I, I just want to, I know there's been a lot of work, and I've been working on this too, ever since the first day I came in, trying to figure out how do we create a contract that best serves the city, downtown's interests, our investment in the theater, everything that's involved with the Genesee Theater, and making it into what it's supposed to be, which is part of, not necessarily the only, but part of the economic engine of our downtown. And, I've made comments, everybody knows that I'm concerned about that. I will sit down and review this again, I will talk to staff, but I, at this time, will notify the city council that I will reserve the right to veto this in written format and then bring it back. But I do want to get some assurances on these performance numbers.
Right.
I absolutely have to have something there to feel comfortable about where we're headed. And we will, we can, we can take, what is my timeframe on that, Newt? Well, we'll look into it, but, yeah, we will look into it, and we'll sit down and talk, and I, and I will talk to Noel, and, yeah, Noel, if you'd like to come up and add anything to the conversation?
And, and Mayor, the, the committee is, we're thinking the same way you are. So I just want to let you know.
Okay, great. Well, I'm glad to hear that.
This contract says that within 30 days of the contract being signed, the committee and SMG staff will come to agreement on the minimum number of shows and the types of shows that are included in that calculation. And then that would become part of the contract at that time.
And it'd be amended and brought back to us for approval, then?
It wouldn't actually be an amendment to the contract, because the contract says that that would be agreed upon, so just that agreement would be a separate action.
Then we would have some sort of letter of agreement from SMG that they, that they acknowledge what we're requesting of them, and that they will then do their best to live up to the terms that we state within the next 30 days.
It would go through Economic Development Committee and then come to City Council as, this is the agreement between SMG and the City Council in terms of the number and types of shows within that contract term, which is May of this year through September of next year. So it's not just May to September of this year.
Right.
It's, it's longer than a year, yes.
Okay. Pardon? Okay. Well, we'll discuss that, then. I will, I will withhold my action pending this, this other meeting, this other rounds of meetings, which I will obviously be very much a part of, and getting us to where this theater will actually have the impact that the $29 million price tag really kind of promised everybody, and it should have. Because it's a beautiful theater, and I just cannot stand to see it not working.
The Oversight Committee intends to take the lead on that discussion about the number and types of shows, and they'll begin that right after Thanksgiving.
Good. Okay. Then we'll wait and see how that, how that comes out, then. So, we, I will not do anything further with the contract. We'll let it go forward as it is, and then we'll all sit down and try to come to the best solution to this that we possibly can, that allows SMG to be, to make some money, and allows the people to come to the theater and come to our downtown and enjoy being in Waukegan. All right, thank you. We have no old business, we have no reports.
We, we have to vote.
We have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Nope.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. And again, I don't want to demean the hard work that's gone into this, because we've all been working on this. It's not that we're, I'm doing that. It's just, I just want to make sure that the best use of that facility is put into place, so. And I thank everybody for all the hard work that they put into it. Now we go to, yes, Alderman Moisio.
I want to back close, I'm not trying to diminish anybody's hard work and efforts, I know this is, but this has been a bad business model from the word go.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Thank you. No old business, no reports and communications. Number 10, New Business, Recommended Actions by Corporation Council. Item A, Approval of the Payroll Dated October 19th, 2011, in the amount of $1,244,854.17. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item B, Approval of Bills Dated November 7th, 2011, in the amount of $2,942,133.69. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Beedling. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item C, Motion to Approve the Raffle Sale Application for the Lake County Bar Foundation. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Valco. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Item D, Motion to Approve the Raffle Sale Application of St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Would anybody like to take the motion on this?
I'll take it.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moisio.[1676.03] Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Motion to Approve the Raffle Sale Application for Waukegan Main Street. Who would like to take this one? Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Now, we have two other items here before us, and I think we'll do item F, and then after we get done with item F, we do need to go into executive session to discuss those issues that I brought up. And so that could take up about 10 to 15 minutes in executive session. So, item F, which is to, yes. Sure, we can do that, we can bounce down to that. Yes, absolutely. Item F, which is to establish an estimate, only a working estimate, for the city of Waukegan 2011 aggregate tax levy in the amount of $16,578,000. I'll take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. And again, as I, I want to stress again, this is only an estimate. This is just something to work from. I'll take a motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Beadling to go into executive session for reasons of, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we're going to jump. I apologize. I start, I get moving, and once in a while, I will jump around. Let's see. Ordinances and resolutions, that's item 11. Item A, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 21 of the Municipal Code for the City of Waukegan Regarding Handicap Parking in Specified Areas. A motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Now, we'll take a motion to go into executive session. I think I called, who did I call on for that?
That was Valco and Beadling.
Alderman Valco and Alderman Beadling have made the motion to go into executive session for settlement of claims pending litigation and real estate negotiations. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. So we will have one more item to vote on when we come back, just so you know. Normally, we're kind, we're done, and we go to, you know, after Alderman's comments, we go into executive session, but we do have this one item to vote on. Okay. Motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Beadling. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, we're back into regular session. We go back onto New Business Recommended Actions by Corporation Council. Corporation Council has left because of a family illness, but we only have this one item, and then Alderman's discussion. Item G, which is approving a resolution authorizing the sale of real estate by the city of Waukegan to Habitat for Humanity Lake County pursuant to the Memorandum of Understanding for Development of the Waukegan Armed Forces Reserve Center located at 1721 North Macquarie Road in Waukegan, Illinois, including 1325 Brookside Avenue, 1416 Melrose Avenue, 1622 10th Street, and 2002 Sunset Avenue. We'll take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Valco, to approve as read. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken. Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Now we move on to Alderman's time. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Hey, you, just real quick, please remember when you're raking your leaves, put them on the, out of the street.
Parkway.
Thank you. Put them on Parkway, not in the street, thank you.
Alderman Moisio.
Just real quick, with Veterans Day in order on Friday, I'd like to recognize a Marine that came home. Alderman Valco knows him also, TJ Rakovich came home in the fall. Yeah, he's home. He served in Afghanistan. I don't know his rank. Alderman Valco, do you know where his rank is?
He's captain.
Captain, which is a pretty high rank in the Marine Corps. Former player and student, very proud of him, and I'm glad he's home.
Is that Joe's son?
Yes, it is.
That's Joe's son, that's his, that's his second, that's TJ.
This young man, just real quick, graduated from Waukegan High School, went to University of Chicago, played football and baseball at the University of Chicago, and then went into the Marine Corps. He didn't have to go in the Marine Corps, with a degree from the University of Chicago. You know, you can go anywhere you want. He chose the Marine Corps, went over there, and he sat back home safe and sound, so.
Alderman Beadling.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I did, I did have one. I want to send out condolences from the city of Waukegan, and I know, Mayor, you were there, to the entire Lynch family. Mr. Paul Lynch, who passed, was a pillar, particularly in, you know, where I lived at. His brother, his son and I grew up together. Mr. Lynch was just a man amongst men for entire community, and I want to send a special condolences out to him. And Mayor, I know, I think you might say something today, but the warm reception that was, was felt, that was felt for him and his, and his family was, was citywide, not countywide, but condolences to the Lynch family. Thank you.
Well, if I might add, that the Lynch family, from the time that I can never remember having friend, a friend on the south side of Waukegan, when I grew up on McAllister, McAllister Street, Mr. Lynch's son, Paul, was one of my very best friends, and he died of brain cancer at, at an early, very early age, in his early twenties. And Mr. Lynch was a wonderful guy. You probably saw him at events with his camera. He loved photography. And, you know, I did ask why the camera wasn't in the casket with him, because I thought it would have been fitting to, to have sent him off with what was his favorite thing to play with. So Mr. Lynch, we'll miss you. He was a good guy, good family, good solid south side family, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.